I noticed Mr. Johnson's here, so that's what I can't.
Mayor, we are recording. Thank you.
All right. Thank you and welcome everyone. Thank you for meeting earlier this evening already in our work session, but it's now just after 7:00 PM. It's Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. This is the city of Cottonwood Heights. This is our business meeting. Again, we're doing it via what we call Zoom, so it's still a bit strange and challenging for all of us, but we're coping it. I want to excuse Councilmember Christine Michael, who was out of the state right now, traveling. I will excuse her this evening. Now we'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to ask Doug Peterson, Councilmember Peterson, if you'll lead us in that pledge.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America.
The United States and to the Republic.
To the Republic, which stands one nation under God. End of this all with liberty and justice.
And justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And Paula, thank you for having the flag on the screen that we can see it, even though.
Hey, Mayor, can I clarify really quickly? That I'll use a football analogy because I know that's one most of you guys will understand. But when a player is hurt or injured on the field, everyone takes the knee out of respect and concern. And so I just want everyone to know my intent is respect and concern.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. All right. Looking at your agenda this evening, we have the next item, which is citizen comments. And I understand we have a lot because of the many issues facing our city right now. So Tim, I'm going to turn it over to you and you can preface it with comments are necessary to clarify the process we've used in gathering citizen comments where the citizens are not here in person.
Okay, our, thank you, Mayor. Our, our meeting agenda, which is noticed, which is the public notice, outlines the requirements related to public comments. It states that public comments may be submitted to the city recorder by email up to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM Mountain Standard Time. Comments received after the start of the meeting will be forwarded to the city council, but not read into the meeting record or addressed during the meeting. So over the last several days, I have received numerous emails, many, many emails from individuals that are commenting about certain issues. Many of those that will be discussed tonight. I am only reading those that provided instructions to have them read into the record. So if there are individuals that had the intent of having them read in the record, they can let me know and we can definitely read them in the record at the next meeting. And so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. We, we have this process that that's the way it is. I don't want to read things into the record when it hasn't been defined specifically by individuals. I get a lot of emails a month related to comments about the city. And unless people define that per our process, per outlined in this, in this agenda, I, I don't include those. So if people don't feel like they got their comments read tonight and they want to make me aware of that, I will make sure and give me the instructions. I will make sure that occurs at the next meeting.
Hey Shane, let me just interject here. Shane, are you comfortable with that understanding?
Yes, I think we need to be, be consistent. We are in an unusual time when we're holding these electronic meetings. And we, we have these instructions as to how we're going to take public comments. So I think that we need to follow the instructions. And so hopefully if people submitted something that they intended to have read into the record, but didn't clearly state that this time, they can resubmit to manager Tingy and it'll, it'll happen next time.
All right. Thank you.
Shane, what guidelines do we have if comments are overtly derogatory or inflammatory?
Well, the, the council, again, it's hard to say in, in this time of electronic meetings. In there obviously is a First Amendment gloss that needs to be considered very strongly when considering public comments and what's derogatory and what's inflammatory. If it was a live meeting, the council would have the ability to, basically if somebody was unruly, was out of control, was disrupting the meeting, why then the council on, on a super majority vote can cause that person to be removed from, from the meeting. But even, even then, it's likely that the city would face a lawsuit for squelching First Amendment rights. So this is, this public comment portion of the meeting is a essentially a, a public forum that the city has created for people to express their opinions. So we'd have to be very cautious about trying to, trying to control what people say.
Thanks.
Then in addition to that, Mayor, I am reading these roughly in the order that they, they are received with the ones that were received at the end, at the, at the beginning. So I'm reading that. Also, I'm going to time myself. There are some that are very lengthy. To be consistent with our process, we've allowed for three minutes. I will time myself. If we don't, if I don't read the whole statement, there are a few that are very long. And I will end that at three minutes and, but it will still be part of the record and will be forwarded to the city council. So with that being said, I will start reading these and it's going to take a while. And I have water here to help me as well. So I'll just move forward. Are you okay with that, Mayor?
No, thank you. And, you know, we've met previously to try and communicate a process that is consistent. And we've had Shane's direction as well. And I want to be sensitive to all those who wanted their comments read, but also understand these are unique times. So I appreciate the effort of Tim and organizing this in a consistent, fair way. So thank you, Tim. Yeah.
Okay. First comment comes from Daisy Thomas. I would like this letter read in the public comments tonight. Councilwoman Bruce is my city rep. I have lived in District Three for nearly five years with my husband and four children. And during these five years before and during Councilwoman Bruce's term, she has shown that she was, is, and has proven herself to be a strong voice on our council. And more importantly, one that is rarely represented. She speaks for those whose voices go ignored. The idea that her character and integrity are being damaged by our fellow community members is abhorrent. Her worries and concerns are valid as they are the same worries and concerns that I and many of our neighbors have reached out to her about dismissing the validity of complaints against our police force is how public trust erodes. Militarization of our police force frightens our community. It doesn't make us feel safer. A for-profit criminal justice system reinforces the public distrust as there is then an economic incentive based on profitability to then purchase Batman-esque items that are simply unnecessary for our city. Wanting to do something tangible, fund city mental health and social services is the bare minimum, at the bare minimum. Inquiring about budgetary concerns is how you keep the trust in place. Transparency matters. It is stunning to me that in 2020, Ms. Bruce could be so dismissed and treated poorly, not just as a city council member, local business owner in Cottonwood Heights resident, but simply as a human being. Is this how we treat our fellow neighbors in Cottonwood Heights in Utah? I would think and hope not, but seeing is believing. I have seen ugliness here that was unexpected, but frankly unsurprising. We moved to Cottonwood Heights because we wanted to raise our children here, but this line of discourse and anger must end. Yes, Black Lives Matter, no kneeling during the anthem isn't disrespectful to the flag. It is recognizing that there's severe injustices happening in the name of the United States, disrespecting all those who have fought and died for our nation. Per Nicole Greenstein's Time Magazine article, why the US flag is red, white and blue, red for courage and readiness to sacrifice, white for pure intentions and high ideals and blue for vigilance and justice. Councilwoman Bruce has proven her courage and readiness to sacrifice her safety and reputation because she holds true to her high ideals and stands for justice. How is that anything but commendable, particularly in an elected official? Instead harassing her, more city officials could be learning from her. And with her on how to be more accountable, how to really parse out these issues and how to do so with grace. The next comments from Wendy Garner. I'm a resident of Cottonwood Heights and I would like the following statement read at the city council meeting tonight. I've been a resident of Cottonwood Heights for 12 years. I love the city for its beauty and awesome residents. Tally Bruce is one of the reasons that I love the city. She is the most responsive public official I have ever known. She listens to all residents, seeking the input and working to meet our needs. Cottonwood Heights is better city because of her commitment and service. Next comment from Catherine L. Peterson. I'm writing this email to be read in council, the Cottonwood Heights meeting tonight. Tally is a bright way, ray of light and positive service and charge in Cottonwood Heights and, and change in Cottonwood Heights. Even though, just a second here. Even though she isn't my councilperson, Tally has been very compassionate and helpful with three chronic and disturbing nuisance issues on 2500 East Nantucket Block in my neighborhood. When code enforcement and Chief Russo weren't helpful, Tally carries the bright torch of transformation for a kind and just society in Cottonwood Heights. I'm inspired by her courage to ask hard questions about police budgets that lack transparency for numerous years. Tally is savvy and a successful business person. She has asked numerous questions on how to make Cottonwood Heights more successful business-wise. Cottonwood Heights is a more enjoyable place to live since Councilwoman Bruce has been Councilwoman. Tally is a hero for her service in Cottonwood Heights. It's unfortunate to read in the Tribune News this week that Mr. Russo is suing Tally in Cottonwood Heights. I'm aware that Mr. Russo has grammar requested Tally's email several times. This is the action of a very paranoid little man. I find it comical and totally out of place that Mr. Russo suing Tally and has let his men mercilessly harass her for over 3.5 years, sitting outside her home in their police car, sandwiching her in between two police cars while driving home from City Hall, harassing her businesses and her employees, and now suing her in the city. I predict that Mr. Russo's lawsuit will spectacularly boomerang and only turn the negate spotlight back on Mr. Russo. He will reap what he sows. If anything, Mr. Russo should be fired for harassing a city councilwoman who was duly elected to represent the people of Cottonwood Heights. He's not fit, fit police chief for Cottonwood Heights. He should never have been hired in the first place. People told Mr. Colomore not to hire Mr. Russo. Mr. Russo was installed by former Mayor Colomore while he was allegedly being investigated by the FBI per the Canyon Inn article in September 2015. Mr. Russo betrayed his boss, Jim Winder, by working with Colomore to be police chief in Cottonwood Heights. And his CHBD has harassed Canyon Inn owners and patrons until it closed. He also harassed 7-Eleven for six years. Fortunately, 7-Eleven is still open and thriving. Mr. Russo's caused a lot of unnecessary drama in Cottonwood Heights. It's time for him to go. He's inciting a lot of this many PR people to take up arms against Councilwoman Bruce. It was like at the zoo last night, arriving to a peaceful rally to reform the police, seeing Russo's huge PR team in action. The best you can do as city manager and council is to remove Mr. Russo. We need not, we do not need an unfit and corrupt drama queen to be leading CHBD. He's done enough damage. The citizens of Cottonwood Heights will breathe easier when Mr. Russo's put past your dress, the pigs and cows. Next item, Michael Kundic. My name is Michael Kundic and I'm a Green Party candidate for Salt Lake County Mayor and a resident of Cottonwood Heights. I want to submit this comment in support of Councilwoman Tally Bruce and her support of Black Lives Matter movement. At a time in the country where compassion, remorse and reform are needed to improve policing in response to numerous strategies, I applaud her decision to take the knee in support of the movement. She's a leader and is helping to be the change we need to see in the world. Next items from Jessica Baker. I'm aware today, I'm aware that today is city council day. I want to be, I want to be sure to send a note and agreement of Councilwoman Tally Bruce on the need for police reform. I have some pretty extreme concerns about the police department that I've had for a few years. I'm not thrilled with reports of neighbors and their experiences with the police and abuse of powers. I'm not thrilled with the cost of our police department versus when we use affiliated police departments. I'm extremely concerned about Mr. Russo, what we pay him for. We certainly should get a higher quality of police officer versus someone with questionable ethics. I'm a fourth generation Cottonwood Heights resident. I love this city. I love all that is offered and wonder, wonderful community that we have. I think it could be much better. Next items from Jim Kitches. I'd like to formally make a public comment in support of Councilwoman Tally Bruce and her absolute right to demonstrate protest by taking a knee during the pledge of allegiance. At the June 2nd, 2020 city council meeting, I fully support her explanation of the rationale behind her action and hold that ultimately Councilwoman Bruce is an elected representative who is accountable to the voters in her district and not pressure from unelected officials within the city. I also want to voice my support of the job she's doing as my elected representative and asking difficult questions about policing and potential police reforms that would result in better outcomes for our city, its citizens and our officers. While uncomfortable, this historic moment, nation demands that we do the hard work of scrutinizing how things have been done in the past, demands that we look inward and reflect on our priorities and desires, desired outcomes as a community. I want to go on the record that I fully support Councilwoman Bruce and believe that she is working on behalf of the constituents to have these hard conversations, make the best and most informed decisions possible. Next one is from Mackenzie Lynn's. I'm writing to show my support of Councilwoman Bruce and her recent actions of standing up through kneeling down for righteous cause. I believe that the Councilwoman's actions are justified and necessary to help support current political movements aiming at, aimed at policing. This movement is of great importance to our community and the Councilwoman's support is essential to the change that is needed nationwide. Her actions should be celebrated and not condemned. I believe that an analysis should be done concerning the police budget. Analysis should be done on any high-funded entity to ensure that the money generated by the community is being used to support its members. The police should not be exempt from questioning and should be accountable to their actions, which includes how they are using their funds. I would also like to state that I believe it's obvious the police are against the Councilwomen's given their chief's lawsuit against her and the harassment that they have acted upon her. It is inappropriate for those who should protect and serve the community to work against said community. And in this situation, the police are working very much against a reasonable request made by the Councilwoman. The mere suggestion that their budget be analyzed, which does not guarantee a budget cut, just questions if the community's funds are being well-used in support of its members. Angers the police and that's a huge problem. In conclusion, I fully support Councilwoman Bruce and a budget analysis of the police. Sarah Kitches is the next one I'm submitting. A public comment and full support of Councilwoman Tally Bruce and the job she's doing as my elected representative. Tally does a wonderful job on behalf of the city and genuinely cares about her constituents. She's doing the unpopular work of asking hard questions about tough issues and it's exactly the kind of leadership we need. Thank you. The next one's from Raylene Harker. Tally Bruce is an inspiration for women and fighting for equal rights and protections for all. She works to ensure that all are represented, heard and cared for in this community. She's willing to speak up even when it is hard and she's criticized. I'm so grateful for her voice and her strength. The next one is from Mike V. The most patriotic thing any of us can do is identify wrongs in the community and try to fix them. This is exactly what Councilwoman Bruce has done in her time on the council. I'm very proud of the courage she has shown. Next one is Ann Dent. I'm overwhelmingly concerned and baffled at the blatant treatment of Councilwoman Bruce. You hire a police chief that has years of bad policing that is noted and allow him to abuse her. As a Councilwoman, she requested a budget analysis of the PD. This is when it all started. I attended few council meetings and the level of disrespect was astonishing. I ask you, Mayor Peterson and other council members, especially you Christine Michael, are you looking away and not standing up for Councilwoman Bruce? If you ask other electeds and police chiefs from the valley about Russo, do you know what they say? Everyone knows his background and lack of integrity is, is afraid to deal with him. Mayor Peterson, how do you hire someone like that? Does Russo have something on you? When will the rest of you take a stand? The places Cottonwood Heights are military militarized Gestapo. They have been given the power to do what they want and it shows. You can remain silent all you want. You can create backdoor deals with your police chiefs. Just remember what happens. The dark comes out in the light always. I implore you to do the right thing. This is about politic, isn't about politics, about what's right. Next one is Jeannie Cronenberg. I've known Tally Bruce for 20 years and I'd like to say that I know she's an honest woman who stands up, stands by her principles. I am so proud that she's standing by her convictions of seeking transparency in the city of Cottonwood Heights. Finances as well, supporting basic human rights. Next one's Anna Marie McNamara. Councilmember Tally Bruce is an incredible representative who listens to all of her constituents with compassion. She's willing to have heard conversations and stand up for marginalized communities by encouraging environmentally friendly practices, inclusive policy changes. Councilwoman Bruce looks with an eye and a heart for the future of the community and our children. I thank Councilwoman Bruce for being willing to challenge our status quo and truly taking our community to new heights. The next one is Mike Keeney just wants me to forward a memo to the council, which I will do that. At your next one is Sherri Nichols. Last meeting, I witnessed Councilmember Bruce dedicate the pledge to our residents of color. What a thoughtful way to recognize all residents. We are diverse and that's a good thing. And she participated in the pledge respectfully with her hand over her heart. She took a knee. Thank you. I'm also, I also noticed officer in uniform laughing and chit-chatting with someone off camera. This is not how I expect, I would expect participation in a meeting this important. Respectfully taken and participating and chucking it up with your buds. I know, which I find to be most disrespectful. Next one is Kim Turner. This is how, this is to show support for Tally Bruce for the amazing effort she's making to shine necessary light on the problems in her district. She has the courage to take it, to make a difference and try to be heard. Please read this email into the public record and count voice among the many that consider Tally Bruce a force for good. Next one is Alyssa Milne. I attended the event yesterday and came away so inspired. I appreciate all of our police, all our police department does to protect us. I also want accountability. I want a system that is fair and just. I'm thankful for Tally and the work she tirelessly does to be a voice for the often undeserved, underserved of our community. I support her 100%. Next one is Kelby Hahn. I would like this email read as public comment, city council tonight. Thank you. I'm in full support of the current actions by Councilwoman Bruce. Her choice to kneel shows a compassion for and dedication to the marginalized members of the community. She's taken a stance for that, which is just and fair. Her call to refocus police model is more than justified, should be taken seriously. Furthermore, the city allowed her to continually be harassed by the chief of police. It's despicable. This should, city should step up and defend her and the commendable action she is taking. I'm proud of Councilwoman Bruce and fully support her efforts. I wish I had a representative like her to look up to when I was on the Cottonwood Heights U. City Council. Next one is Mackenzie Peterson. After attending the rally at City Hall on Monday evening, I would like to express my immense gratitude for cotton. Councilwoman Tally Bruce, many Cottonwood Heights citizens such as myself feel our voices are not accurately represented by the majority of elected officials. However, Councilmember Bruce provides a voice for us all. I'd like to thank her for compassion and concern for the black community that is suffering so greatly at this time. I'd like to thank her for her dedication to transparency in the city budget. It is my opinion that the CHBD is grossly overfunded. I urge other council members of Cottonwood Heights to consider reallocating a portion of police budget to education. Next one is Sherri Nichols. At your last meeting, I witnessed, I witnessed Councilwoman Bruce, Bruce dedicate the pledge to our residents of color. What a thoughtful way to recognize all residents. We are diverse. And that's a good thing. And she participated in the pledge respectfully with her hand over her heart. She took a knee. Thank you. I also noticed the officer in uniform laugh. Actually, I've read this one. I'm sorry. Apologize. Next one's Tyler McNamara. I hope your day is going well. I know there's been a ton of craziness going on with the protests lately. I was just hoping that you could voice my support of Tally Bruce tonight. If a specific comment can be made, I'd like to be along the lines of I'm proud to have Tally as my city council representative. Her ability to stand up for what's right in the face of intimidation speaks volumes to her character. Any help would be greatly appreciated. Next one is Michaela Hopkins. After attending Monday's rally, I would like to express my gratitude to Councilwoman Bruce. She graciously landed her platform for underrepresented voices to be heard, the voices of communities that are too often silenced and dismissed. Communities are simply asking for safety, for basic human rights, peaceful rallies such as what I experienced yesterday. Give me great hope for safer tomorrow for all. As a black woman of color, I stand with Tally Bruce. Next one's Elizabeth Dean. To the citizens of Cottonwood Heights, I have known Tally Bruce for years, for a few years. And in that time, I have only known her to be an outstanding, outstanding human and citizen. She's thoughtful and has such compassion for others, especially those in need. She's been through difficult times and not only raised herself up, but also her children, her family, her friends and complete strangers. And she hears, when she hears, sees or knows of any injustice, Tally is the first to stand up to it. She's not afraid of asking questions and she most definitely does not stand idly by. She works hard for what is right, but yet is willing to listen when listening is required. I support Tally Bruce and hope that others can get to know her as I have. She's an exceptional, exceptional American and human. Next is Tracy Gunderson. It's recently come to my attention that public comments are to be read into the record in an official city meeting this evening with regard to Councilmember Bruce. Please include mine for the record. The US Constitution provides all Americans with the fundamental right to free speech. Specifically states that Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting free exercise thereof or bridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the right of the people. Peace please to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. Constitutional right is held by all US citizens, including those who hold elected office, regardless of what one's personal opinion of the recent events involving civil rights, police brutality and the Black Lives Matter movement happens to be the right to express that opinion as a foundational principle of a free people. I respectfully urge the city of Cottonwood Heights and its residents to protect and honor the constitution of our state federal governments. Any negative government action against Ms. Bruce for political opinions will deter all free speech in the city and the association rights protected by the First Amendment created, creating an illegal chilling effect. Next one, Lori Gray. Tally is someone who has the courage to stand up for people of color and others who are oppressed in Cottonwood Heights in Utah. She should be applauded for taking a knee. We need more Utahns like her. Next one, Ellen Burrell. Councilwoman Tally Bruce has exhibited exemplary public service to her district's constituents and the Cottonwood Heights community at large, opening herself up to hear constituents' concerns and needs, not only during formal meetings, but also on a monthly informal basis. She has followed through on her commitment to take action on the items that her constituents need in order to make Cottonwood Heights a safer, more physically sound city. She represents my values and hopes for the betterment of our community. Next one, Kim Stojak. This is to be read into public comments. Tally is our David standing up to the glass, CHBD and Russo. She is an ally to the citizens of Cottonwood Heights, unlike any we've ever had before. She stands for truth, integrity and compassion, has been such an asset to our city council, our community. She stands for what is truth. I applaud her for who she is and what she believes is the best for our community. Just holding our city government and police department transparency and accountability. Tally, thank you for your continued service and having the courage to stand up for us citizens as to speaking out on what is right. We have your back 100% because we have fought against this life and it doesn't play nice. The next one is Jack Bloom. Sending you an email in support of Councilwoman Tally Bruce. The residents of her district should be proud to have as conscientious a councilperson as Ms. Bruce. Since being elected, she's been tireless in her work to represent the best interest, not only of her constituents, but of all the citizens of Cottonwood Heights. She has asked the hard questions that others are unwilling to ask. She should be commended, not vilified for her willingness to do this. She shows everyone what a real public servant should strive to be. Thank you for the opportunity to express my gratitude for having Tally Bruce as an elected official of Cottonwood Heights. Next one is Gabrielle Nacy. My name is Gabrielle Nacy. I am a resident of Cottonwood Heights and this is to be read in the public comment. I would like to share my feelings on Tally Bruce. I think she's an amazing representative for the people of this district. I appreciate the options she presents. Her open-mindedness and pure kindness is exactly what we need in these trying times. In meeting her last night, all my formed opinions of her were completely solidified. Thank you much. Next one is Ray James. Ray James. Wish God for my support with Tally Bruce. She's an incredible individual and I feel that she's the best person to serve our community. Okay, and the next one is I need my glasses on this one. Sorry. Jim Kitch's. Feel like I've read this one before, but I'll read it again just in case I'm not sure. I would like to formally make a public comment in support of Councilwoman Tally Bruce and her absolute right to demonstrate protest by taking a knee during the Pledge of Allegiance of the June 2nd, 2020 city council meeting. I fully support her explanation of the rationale behind her action and hold that ultimately Councilwoman Bruce is an elected representative who is accountable to the voters of her district. And not pressure from unelected officials with the city. I also want to voice my support of the job that she's doing as my elected representative and asking difficult questions about policing and potential police reforms that would result in better outcomes for our city, citizens and our officers. While uncomfortable, this historic moment demands that we do the hard work of scrutinizing how things have been done in the past. It demands that we look inward and reflect on our priorities. And desired outcomes as a community, I want to go on record that I fully support Councilwoman Bruce and believe that she is working on behalf of her constituents in the city to have these hard conversations and make the best, most informed decisions possible. Thank you. Moving on. The next one. One second here. The next one is from Calvin H. Colmore, Jr. I write this letter to express to the council my position regarding racial inequality in law enforcement. Please share this letter on the record with the council in the council meeting tonight. Let me state unequivocally that there is no place in law enforcement for racial profiling or race bias in the application of law. As a result, I support the concerns expressed by Black Lives Matter. We need to have adjustments to our attitudes in society and work to erase any elements of bias in our enforcement of the laws. That said, I'm saddened by the blanket accusations made against the police in general. We will not win the battle of improving law enforcement by vilifying those who put their lives on the line every day. We need to encourage collaboration with law enforcement, not exclude them from the public forum and discussion. We try to make all police the villain when only a few are bad actors. We compel them to be defensive. We drive good officers out of the force and we create an air of antagonism that makes any officer fearful to do their job. They distrust the efforts for appropriate reform when they are being included in the discussion. We need to thank the police for all the good they do, invite them to help us improve our efforts to erase racial profiling and racial inequality in law enforcement. Who better to make the hap- that happen quickly than a police force willing to adopt new policies and procedures because of the support they feel from the community. Years ago, when I was serving as mayor, there was a shooting of a person in another jurisdiction who was in mental distress. Chief Russo and I had a conversation about how we would handle such a situation in Cottonwood Heights. The council weighed in and we together with police leadership agreed that sensitivity training was needed and appropriate. It has happened repeatedly since that time. CHPD is among the best trained to deal with people fighting mental illnesses of all kinds and has shown a willingness to adapt and change to meet societal expectations and improve equal enforcement of the law. In addition, many of the issues raised by those demanding reform have long been policy for Cottonwood Heights. In the history of the CHPD, I've only, I'm only aware of three times when lethal force was used. That shows significant restraint and is evidence of proper training. I believe that statistics will show that CHPD has a much higher diversity population than the citizenry of Cottonwood Heights. At one point, we boasted fifty percent of minorities of our police force until the hostilities toward the police began a few years ago. Now it's down to around thirty percent. The hostilities I refer to are those fostered by Councilwoman Tally Bruce. Her efforts to undermine CHPD, attack our police chief and create a hostile environment has been most unfortunate. It's been her mission since being elected to rid the city of Chief Russo and if possible, the entire police department. Councilwoman Bruce has even gone so far as to make a veiled attempt to get the chief's wife fired from her position as a dental hygienist by telling the dentist, Chief Russo's wife was employed by that she felt unsafe coming into his office. Her actions resulted in a lawsuit being filed against the city and her by the her by the chief. I resent the fact that my tax dollars are going to be used to fund, defend a lawsuit. This is the product of Councilwoman Bruce's personal agenda. She feigns support of the police, but you cannot afford find a single CHPD who believes that to be true. It's soundbite she utilizes to deflect criticism and give cover to her narrative. I'm a constituent of District Three. She does not represent my views. Or does she represent the views of the majority of the constituents I know in District Three? Three minutes have gone on that. I'll forward it to you for the rest. There's a couple of more paragraphs on that. And I'm going to adhere to the three minutes. Next one is from Andrew Davis. As a longtime resident of Cottonwood Heights, I would like to throw my support behind CHPD and Chief Russo. Due to the nature of my profession, I've had the opportunity to come into close contact with the CHPD many times. On many different emergencies and crime scenes, I've seen the good officers of our city. When the stress and difficulties of their jobs is in full view, I've never seen any member of the police department act in any way other than with professionalism or restraint. My unique perspective working alongside many departments across this valley gives me the confidence to say that I believe that we have a capable, as capable and professional police department as you will find. I'm, I support them and I'm grateful that they are just a call waiter or saw on the meme in my family. I finding, I find it disturbing that the councilwoman from the city would lend would lead a protest against her own police department. This is not a time to let personal petty history of Chief Russo punish all of the good and upstanding police officers in our community, which in turn hurts the community itself. These are difficult times with a current pandemic, sad and tragic racism and political hate everywhere we turn. The city is our home. Now's the time to embrace each other. But those things from the past that are not relevant be forgotten and may come closer as a community. Thank you for your time. The next one is a letter that was requested to be read and they wanted to remain anonymous. And it's lengthy, so I will forward it to you, but I'll read the first portion of it. I write to you as a concerned resident of Cottonwood Heights. I'm appalled, disappointed and disgusted by the fact there was an anti-American protest held in our small, calm little town of Cottonwood Heights tonight. Those may be strong words to some of the council members, but that is exactly what I witnessed tonight. My heartache is my love for our great country. The last bastion of freedom here on this earth was torn into pieces slaughtered by speaker after speaker who denigrated our freedoms with vile hate speech. Spinning lie after lie about our wonderful country. And our city approved this and our city council approved this. And from what I understand, this event was sponsored and promoted by a member of our city council. Same, shame on the CWH city council person who is behind this. Shame on the council for allowing this to occur in our city. Shame on the city for endorsing this kind of activity. Seriously, Mr. Tingy, this was a CWH city approved sponsored event. But at the city's sponsored event, there were no speakers on the microphone to tell the truth. How sad for all those in attendance. No matter what side they were on, all deserve to hear the whole truth. City that allows false information to be preached from its own building is despicable. Here are some truths for you and the rest of the council. I would be happy to have you share this letter and these facts with the rest of the council. Maybe some council members will wake up to the truth and the truth that the majority of our city and its residents do not want all these liberal lies laid on us. Our little town is not the place for this type of event. There is no reason to bring the lies and the hate speech to our neighborhoods. We get enough of this on TV and with the lies. The MSM promotes daily. If you tell people lies long enough, they begin to believe them. The agenda that was pushed tonight by the speakers of the protests were all one sided. There's nothing heard from one, from the conservative platform. Fair is fair, right? So where was the fairness tonight? The vocal minority had center stage with microphones, speakers, music and loud, loud voices preaching all kinds of hate. The fact is this type of protest that brings anger, hate, upheaval, racism, division, anti-American hate speech by way of Democrat socialism is not the majority of our is not what the majority of our city wants. Well, by the rights of our constitution, we are all allowed a peaceful protest. This type of indoctrination is not something that should be tolerated in our community. We have no reason to bring these violent extremists to our little town. We are not LA, NYC, Chicago or any other large city with the kind of crime and civil unrest that thrive in those areas. We are civil society. We honor our neighbors, friends, government and police. If and when there are issues, we solve them in a court of law, following the laws of the land without discrimination or prejudice. Giving this type of group of platform to push their agenda, recruit and spread the divisiveness is not helpful and binding. Peaceful relations between neighbors, communities, police or government. An already peaceful community exists here and spewing the rhetoric of the liberal socialist just breeds hate and animosity. That's three minutes. There's about two or three more pages of this. I will forward it to the council for your review. Next one is from Boy J Tuttle.
Jim, can I interrupt you really quickly? I would move that we don't read any more anonymous. This is in replace of a public comment forum where no one's allowed to watch the pulpit anonymously.
Dear sirs, I've been a resident of Cottonwood Heights since 2009, having moved here from New York with my family because we are fortunate enough to secure a lot. With a bit of acreage, we have been blessed to craft out a small hobby farm with horses, chickens, etc. During the last five or six years, we have unfortunately seen our horses break out of their corrals on more than one occasion. Each and every time, it seems that our gratitude goes out to our Cottonwood Heights policemen and women who with professionalism and dispatch were the first to immediately A alert us about the situation and B assist us in getting these very valuable animals returned to their safe, their corral safely without further incident. In every case, the officers were professional and kind, even though I probably deserved the scolding for failing to keep the animals better secured. The officers were never condescending or rude. They're remarkably friendly and courteous in every respect. Comes to law enforcement, I observe these same fine officers effectively tracking down criminals and making arrests even here in our little Happy Valley. And no time have I ever observed, nor have I ever heard that a member of our community was mistreated or disrespected or abused in any way by our, our fine officers. Even though I hate to admit that I have been pulled over a time or two on our streets here in Cottonwood Heights, it's almost always been for a legitimate reason. And in all of those encounters, our CH police officers have always acted in good faith, whether in issuing a citation or warning, they've handled each and every situation with courtesy and efficiency. I just want to say that I don't, would hate to think that the day would ever come that our faithful law enforcement officers might not be on the job or missing in action when a desperate call goes out for a prowler in the backyard, a stolen vehicle, a precious child or prize horse missing would be unthinkable. I cannot imagine getting a no answer after dialing nine one one or recording that says, sorry, we no longer provide those services. A big thank you to all the men and women of the Cottonwood Heights Police Department. Next one is Carville Whiting. I would, I want to go on record as highly supporting the Cottonwood Heights Police Force. Please do not give in to those who are trying to make radical changes that will weaken our ability to enforce the law. Please do not listen to those who are attempting to discredit the police, especially in our community. I've watched the anti-police movement grow over the past few years where the onus is always on the policeman. Never on one resisting arrest. When something bad happens, the question is always, what did the policeman do wrong that caused this? Never does the suspect, the person resisting arrest bear any responsibility for what happened. This disconnect amazes me. Would this event have happened if the suspect had not resisted arrest? The answer is obvious. Please do not give in to those who, please do not give in to those who do not like laws limiting what they want to do. Who are also concerned about the rights of criminals and who are trying to limit the capabilities and effectiveness of our police department. I support the Black Lives Matter initiative in that it appears there has been a pattern of racism and abuse in certain areas of our country that needs to be corrected. I think additional training and cultural sensitivity is good, but these things should not be used as a wedge to destroy our capability to keep law and order in our communities. But along with this cultural sensitivity training, we need to have training on the other side. What is the responsibility of the suspects, those who the police are attempting to arrest? The needs, this needs to be clearly spelled out with appropriate consequences if the suspect does not comply. We do not have a problem in Cottonwood Heights. Our police force does a good job. I know from personal experience. Next one is from Craig Weston. As a resident of just one second here, as a resident of Cottonwood Heights for the past thirty years, I want to express my support for Chief Russo and the CH Police Department. I was at the rally last evening and was troubled by the false statements that were shared over the microphone. I've never been a resident when we had a unified police. I have never, I have been a resident when we had a unified police and CHPD to the contrary of the statements that were made. I found this to be totally wrong. When I had my car or home broken into and I called the sheriff department, not one time did an officer ever come to my home. They simply gave me a case number and I never heard from the police thereafter. Unlike every time I've had and theft when the CHPD was here. Not only did the officers come to my home, but they would go to the neighbors looking for surveillance footage. I even had an officer call me to notify me that my property was being sold at Play It Again Sports. I recovered some of the stolen items. Thank you, officer. Never did CHPD say, here is your case number. Call the insurance company. This protest, I would rather call it a rally for CHPD was organized by Councilwoman who has held a grudge with the CHPD for years. This is all about what she claimed to be harassment on a drinking establishment that she frequented. That she frequented. The truth is the CHPD were trying to keep our streets safe. She would have, she would have rather allowed drunk drivers on the road endangering the public than having them legally pulled over after leaving the well-known drinking establishment in CH, the Canyon Inn. Her claims that this was orchestrated to force the owner out is totally unfounded, especially since the building is still standing. Certainly the police force can be educated and improve and update current policy. That does not happen when you defund any police department. So again, as a thirty year resident of CH, we support our police department. Next one is from Darren Croft. I would like to speak in support of the Cottonwood Heights Police Department. I've had many interactions with them, including a burglary. A burger burglary. My property was eventually recovered. Logistical and plain call support during a large gathering with a visiting dignitary, multiple incidents when I called about suspicious activity on my secluded dead end street. A traffic stop when I was given a ticket. In each of these instances, officers were professional, courteous and respectful. I've also been extremely impressed with their response time. There was a very obvious improvement in the responsiveness and engagement of the police when the city moved from using the county services to their own police force. I am opposed to the funding or expanding the CHPD or contracting with the unified police force, and I'm grateful for service of the CHPD to my family and our community. Next one. It's from Debbie and T Tyler. We feel that we must take a stand in favor of our Cottonwood Heights police officers. We realize our country is at a crossroads and making basic changes to prevent use of brutality and we agree we should. There's some bad apples in law enforcement and they should be held accountable, but we feel here in Cottonwood Heights, we have the cream of the crop in police. We know many of them and they are very professional, good officers. Who of us would want to go out and clean up the messes they deal with? Do we thank our police enough? We now have people pushing their personal mendettas and agendas. That is not a representation of the people. Yes, any vocation can improve, but it's time to show support for our honorable police. We thank Chief Russo, Chief Brenneman and the department for doing a great job. Next one is Diane Butler. First and most important, I want to express my love and gratitude all to all the brave men and women who serve us so diligently 24/7. My husband and I often comment on how nice it has been to have the CHPD. They've answered every call. We made quickly and professionally. I'm so saddened by the events that are going on around us. Racism is horrible. And changes need to be made. Every one of us has to take a look at ourselves to see how we can each become better, to focus on our entire police force is so unfair to those who served us in every day, those who put their lives on the line to help protect us. We owe them so much. To disrespect them in this way by defunding them is a horrible, is horrible. Changes can be made everywhere. Much more can happen if it's done when good men and women come together with respect, civility. My second point is we're all experiencing so much stress. Please no more. I said to my husband, I can't take one more thing. And here we go again. Thank you, Tally, Tally and those who are helping you to adding to what is already too much. Thank you, CHPD and your families. You are loved. We need you. More funding, not defunding. Next one, Edie Smart. Dear officers of Cottonwood Heights Police Force, thank you. Thank you for your service, for your kindness. For the smiles and waves when I pass by for keeping my special part of the world a safe place for me and my family. Thank you for your professionalism, for your efforts. I cannot even imagine how your family feels when you leave home each day to face the challenges you face protecting us. Thank you to your family and you for your unselfish service. I hope you know how grateful I am and and know in my own small way, I'm praying for your safety. Next one is Aaron Davis. I am very concerned about all events going on in our country right now. The racist actions by the Minnesota police were deplorable. And it's important to root out any of the police force that would contribute to this kind of behavior. However, with that said, I do not condone the violence that has occurred because of protest. Peaceful protests, protests are fine, but the actions of some to commit crime and violence is not acceptable. There are other ways. There are other ways to promote change. I'm also saddened by the generalization of the police officers around the country and they, that they are at fault. I do not believe this is true and I especially do not believe that the Cottonwood Heights police officers are in this category. I would hope that if there is even one that has this problem, they be removed, but for all of the other. Police officers, I believe they deserve our respect, our respect and support. I do not support the idea of defunding the police force. I've been very happy with the work of the CH police and they have responded to some of my calls in the past. In the past, and I appreciate their kindness and willingness to work with the citizens of CH. Because of the CH police, I feel that our neighborhoods are safer, our roads are safer, we have less drunk drivers. And overall, we have a safe community. We feel that our police chief Robbie Russo has been a good chief. And we support keeping him working for our city. Next one is Dr. Gary Larson. I would like to let. You and the city council know that I strongly support the police department in our city. I do. Not know of any racial problems that we have had here in the city. The department has done a terrific job in a very difficult occupation. Talk of defunding the department would be anarchy. I think they need to be praised for the excellent job they do. Would you please? Please notify the council my feelings. The next one. Is. From Heather Anderson, District One. She says, as a lifelong citizen of Utah and a citizen of Cottonwood Heights for twenty-four years, I'm deeply proud of our community. Grateful for the service of our public leaders and of our public servants. I was invited to attend the police reform rally through the Cottonwood Heights political. Facebook page by many who were. Annoyed or perhaps disgusted with my personal position that I support our law enforcement officers as a whole. Clearly it did not matter that I also agreed that changes to policy could be made to better our system. Are you confused? I was. Wasn't this rally about reforming policy? Why can't I believe that as a society, we need our great officers? My family tended to show our support for our law enforcement. We left behind. We left before the reform rally began. We'd had our say and frankly, were afraid to stay for the rally. Protesters yelling F the police, drive up and down the bang. Drive up and down Bengal with their posters, root comments and gestures trying to start a fight. Other protesters mixing in with the rally to try and stir up problems. Some even went to the Brighton side of the road and intimidated some elderly neighbors of ours. Absolutely unacceptable behavior. This wasn't yet their time. Our voices as citizens of our city matters too. I appreciated the mood Anna McNamara tried to set and keep as an organizer of the reform rally. She politely wandered the crowd, offering masks. I did watch the replayed recording of the reform rally. It appeared she continued to encourage peaceful event. I really wanted to listen to what they had to say despite the angry. Among them. I agree, a citizen review board is wonderful idea. Citizens should go through a mini police academy, go on regular ride alongs and attend court hearings. To get a better understanding of what challenges our community is facing with daily. They should be educated on policies as well. As our judicial system to better understand how the laws apply and how to make change. Is within our city's ability to make change or does that change need to happen at a state or federal level? Recording twenty-four seven is not the simp, is not that simple. From my research, there's a tremendous cost. It is very expensive to run and store those cloud based devices. If our city wants to invest seventy thousand or more for our own server, then maybe that could happen. Maybe rally organizers like to. Fund that expense. On another note, as a citizen, when does my right to privacy come into play? Rape reports, a domestic violence assault, being notified of a death, those are no one else's business. Additionally, I understand that citizens who are recorded have the right to exclude body cams in court hearings. What's the point of that? If an officer can't refuse a recording into evidence, why can a criminal? This request to record twenty-four seven is not that simple, but with time, legislation and technology, I'm sure it will become a reality. Why do we call the police? It's just to say, is it just to say, hey, how's your day? No. We call it because there's a problem we need help with. Change the model or don't. Personally, it doesn't bother me. Maybe the reform rally organizers were likely to acquire funding to change the model on all vehicles. And there's more, I will forward this on to you, but I hit my three minute mark on this. Next one is from Joe Lewis. I would, I would request this be read in the council meeting as I will be unable to attend. I'm a resident of Cottonwood Heights. After hearing about two planned protests that will be coming to the city, I'm concerned with two demands at the hands of these protests. A polarization that is increasingly pitting neighbor against neighbor and friend against friend. These two extreme opposing views are going to crush the city first in a call to defund the police. I believe we are opening a door to a dangerous and grave situation. Under our previous police chief, I experienced at the hands of our police. Our police, something I've called the God complex, an individual in a position of. Authority allowing that to foster an oppressive, holier-than-thou attitude. Despite my experience, I'm well aware that a few bad apples do not make every other bad apple. Second, I strongly support the NAACP and the message of equality. I have lived my life always rooting and preferring the underdogs. Minorities and the downtrodden. I personally experienced staring down the barrels of shotguns being in the wrong areas of inner cities. While hoping to survive long enough to see my family again and persecution portrays tied to my identity. My skin color, though pink, my religion and other traits and differences have been reason enough. For my peers to justify the berating abuse and lack of human decency. The worst experience I felt regarding bias was not in another part of the country. It occurred in this very state. I was physically beaten as a direct result of my religion. At the hand of Caucasian, Caucasian people who perceive me as different. Both what I experienced in the past and what is happening now is an attempt to force change on others. The form of change is not lasting. It's like teaching a pig to sing. The pig will, pig will never sing and it irritates the pig. I didn't, I do know that we are all biased in some ways. The protests have come both violent and peaceful are not causing people to look inward and make necessary changes. Instead, it's creating a clamor of rush to judgment that will foster both extremes. Become more pronounced and the hate and spite increasingly, increasing dramatically. Each of us needs to look inwardly and determine what rights. What changes we should be making on our personal level. Please refrain from using the lectern of protest either to obscure other issues or to increase public notoriety. Your elected officials, please maintain the decorum of the office to which you're elected. Is there a change that needs to be made in law, policy or procedure? Please make it. I plead with you that you do not criminalize, criminalize our police force. We should not. Burn the orchard because one apple is bad. Do not criminalize all of our police force. As a bloodletting for events that have happened in other communities. Our officers do good things even with their flaws. I do not believe that a single soul in the city has lived a perfect life that is free of bias. We are not your cash cows. You are our stewards. Please be stewards. Please be the stewards you were elected to be. The next one's from Julie Clausen. I'm a citizen of Cottonwood Heights and want to express my support of the police department. I'm grateful they work tirelessly to protect my community and I stand with them in the face of the opposition they are facing today. I have heard the behavior of those officers who destroy and don't uphold their offices they should and certainly think. The, the current events in today's protest climate require examination and change where needed. I fear the word that strips our police departments a needed resource. I fear the world that strips our police departments a needed resources and money. In an effort to satisfy the loud angry voices and I find it appalling and unconscionable. That a sitting city council member would organize or even support a rally protesting the very people who protect. And defend our families and community and demand to defund them. Please read my comments at the city council meeting. I want all voices that support our police department to be heard. The next one is from. Kelly Bollinger. I found Tally Bruce's comment on TV interesting that we are not on different sides when commenting on the police. She has been after the police and Robbie Russo since she was put in office. She stated it's not unreasonable to ask people to do their job better. We are asking her to do her job better and represent all of us instead of the few she does now. The next one is from Kent Davis. To the, after weeks of watching the riots, the violence and the destruction of personal and public property within our state and other parts of the country. I'm appalled that members of our community and some of the members of our own city council are planning to hold a protest in our peaceful city of Cottonwood Heights. I'm told that the council person Tally, Tally Bruce organizing the efforts, the intentions of the march are to protest against our Cottonwood Heights Police Department. And to embarrass and demoralize the men and women who are members of our police force with the ultimate goal to defund the Cottonwood Heights Police Department. And even to eventually eliminate the Cottonwood Heights Police Department in our city. How embarrassing. The one or two members of the city council who are doing this are an embarrassment to themselves, to their families and to the citizens of the city. Shame on you. The time when we should be rallying together, you are dividing us apart. As I watch the national news, I'm appalled and opposed to the heavy-handed racist remarks and actions of some of the police and some of the protesters. In our nation, there are racists and troublemakers on both sides. I've never seen or heard of any instance of members of the Cottonwood Heights Police Department being involved in such actions. I've lived in Cottonwood Heights since nineteen eighty-seven. And I've had many instances where the police department rendered service to me and to my family. I didn't like, I did not like the speeding ticket that I received and deserved, but in all my interaction with our city police. I found the police officers to be helpful, honorable and fair. I support Chief Russo and the officers, both women and men who are the heroes of the city. While some of you are stirring up trouble, they are keeping the peace. I applaud the efforts of those in city, in the city government who are standing with our police chief and the officers of our police department. Next one is from. Kevin Gunnel. My wife and I are happy residents of Cottonwood Heights. For eight years now, we write to you in light of recent events to express our support. For the maintenance of a local police department presence. Last few weeks have brought immense sadness and we've seen communities struggle. With reactions from the death of George Floyd and others who have been treated unjustly. We grieve with those families and hope they receive justice and eventual peace and we voice our strongest condemnation to racism in any form. It is our hope that a knee jerk reaction of defunding or removing our local police force is not an action that is taken by our elected leaders here in Cottonwood Heights. To us, that would be a significant error of judgment and would definitely not reflect our views as your constituents. Our experience with Cottonwood Heights Police Department has been positive and we are grateful for their presence. We feel that the poor unjustifiable actions of few should not tarnish. The badges of the overwhelming majority of officers who proudly and honorably represent their profession with dignity. And fairness as they protect our homes and community. Please do not take any action to defund or decommission or remove any important part. Or remove an important part of our community. The next one is from RKW Watts. Please, it is clear that Councilwoman Bruce is confused on her priorities. As a city council member, you would think she would have a higher regard for the citizens of CH that. To plan any kind of protest in our city that has the potential to become violent as we see in many cities throughout the country each day. We cannot possibly guarantee a peaceful protest and it seems she invited potential danger to our doorsteps, to the very neighborhood she was elected to represent and protect. Black lives matter as do all other lives. Managing city budgets should be done through the process she was elected to be part of. She didn't like the outcome, she's free to keep trying. I honor and support CHPD imperfect as they may be, but who are sworn to protect our city against crime and violence. Perhaps Ms. Bruce should resign from her city duties and find another organization to support that may solve the problem. Next one is from Christine Jones. I have, I have become aware of a movement to defund the Cottonwood Heights Police Department. As a citizen of Cottonwood Heights, I want to express my deep opposition to such a move. No doubt, there are some officers in our nation who have acted. In oppressive ways. However, I continue to believe the vast majority are upright and trying to do the right thing. I support Chief Russo and the men and women of his department. No defunding. Next one is from. Let me see, Larry. Utah Road Warrior. I would like to have this message read at the city council meeting. I have lost a son and a brother who are well-loved members of the law enforcement community in the Salt Lake Valley. One in nineteen fifty-nine and one in two thousand and ten. I have lived in the Cottonwood Heights area for forty-nine years and never had a bad experience with our officers. It's my opinion that my city council should recall one member of the city council do away with her position and add her salary to the budget of the police. Department. I'm appalled that a member of our elected council would take such an action. Next one is from Melinda Pugh. It has come to my attention that there is a proposal to defund the Cottonwood Heights Police Department. I am sickened and saddened by this proposal. I feel safe living in Cottonwood Heights because of the presence of the Cottonwood Heights Police Department. I feel safe knowing that they are constantly in the area patrolling and looking out for. The safety and protection of our city. I have never had any negative encounters with any of them. I ask that you please strongly consider. Continuing to fund the Cottonwood Heights Police Department. The safety of our community depends on it. That's Mindy Whiting. The next one is from Michael Hannan. As a thirty-nine year resident of Cottonwood Heights and as a veteran of the United States Air Force, I'd like to state that the behavior. Of councilmember Tally Bruce, she kneeled during the pledge of allegiance was brazenly disrespectful as well selfish and uncalled for. This is an appropriate time and place for, this is an appropriate time and place for airing opinions and expressing dissatisfaction with the state of affairs. In a community, state or nation, but doing so and in such manner. As Ms. Bruce displayed was totally inappropriate. Her kneeling was a shameful display of disrespect, not only for the flag in the council. But also the citizens of this, of the district and the entire city of Cottonwood Heights. She is not on the city council to protest or commiserate or grieve. She is there to represent the individuals and families. Who live in her district and do so in a mature and thoughtful manner. Whatever she was protesting or fretting about, however sincere her intentions may have been. What she did was a slap in the face to the residents of our city. It is my feeling that at the very least, she should be publicly reprimanded and she should be asked to write a public apology to the residents of Cottonwood Heights. She's not held accountable, then I must sadly acknowledge being ashamed of my city council. There's an old adage which states that just because you can doesn't mean you should. Ms. Bruce should have known better. She has eroded the confidence of many, many residents. In representative government by acting in such an irresponsible and selfish way. Next one. It's from Mike Hanson. As a citizen of District Three, I'd like to voice my support and thanks for our police department. And the efforts they made while serving during the riot situation in Salt Lake City. Is my understanding that a few of our officers sustained injuries, some needed treatment, others cared. Not to report until the situation was under control. It's these brave officers that serve our community daily here in Cottonwood Heights. My gratitude to you all. With the popular movement today to criticize and to fame law enforcement and particularly from my elected official. I believe that this is not the narrative that rings through our district. I've had many conversations with constituents. In this district that do not support councilperson Bruce and her constant negative narrative, especially concerning our police chief. I will keep this comment as respectful as possible by ending with continual thanks and respect for our officers. Who serve and protect our city. They reflect the leadership and professionally. That professionally trains and guides them. Next one is from Michael Smith. I am in support of our police department as well as police generally. I find it highly troubling that anyone would consider removing. Support or defunding the police. I can go about my life without fear because the police have my back. I do not need to worry about who is bigger or meaner or more armed. The reason I do not need to worry is because of the police. Society can function because of laws and enforcement of laws. If the police are removed from the equation, then laws become meaningless. And society suffers as anarchy takes hold. Please let the police in Cottonwood Heights know. They are very much appreciated. Law enforcement is an honorable profession. Most don't, most people don't make a lot of noise and those same people greatly value the peace and security that are provided by police. Please don't think that your service is not valued. The noise and confusion caused by the few doesn't represent the vast majority. Next one is from Nan Crandall. Police presence in Cottonwood Heights has improved since we hired our in-house police force. I feel much safer having our own officers who are focused on our community. My dad has commented that there is always a lot in the news regarding cotton. There is always a lot in the news regarding Cottonwood Heights and my answer to him was that we have such a great police force. The more, more things are being handled and discovered. I'm grateful for our police force. And desire to leave them just as they are protecting my family, neighbors and community. Next one from Nancy Newland. Is this another chance at the ousting of our police force? I have nothing but respect and confidence in our police force. When you need them, they are there and not twenty to thirty minutes later. If we need to continue our protection. This plea, if we need to continue our protection, this police force that we now have is spot on. Next one, Pamela Hannan. I support our CHPD men and women. They're doing an outstanding job. I am for doing everything we can to give them the training tools and any other support necessary to help them with their. Job to uphold law and order and keep our city and our citizens safe. Funding the police department and the men and women in it. Is totally the brainstorm of people who have no clue how to safely run the city. Let's not tie the hands that are, that so ably service. Thank you, CHPD. Next one is from Patsy Young. I would like to express my concern for our police department, considering the unfair condemnation of all police expressed in our country. In these last few weeks is very sad that our officers and Chief Russo have to endure that on top of all the duress that have endured. For the past few years from a member of our city council. I don't blame. I don't blame Chief Russo for suing the city and particularly the councilwoman who has brought this unpleasantness what was, to what was until her tenure, tenure, a peaceful, well-run place to live. I support Chief Russo, our officers, and those to work, who work in the CHPD. We need to stop the nonsense and understand that there is a need in Cottonwood Heights for local police. I once heard someone say, you don't need the police until you need the police. In the recent past, my family needed the police. There was an ongoing situation that created fear and uncertainty. Having the police close by during that period helped my family feel safe through a tense situation. I would like to add my voice to the many in the city who support law enforcement in general and especially our Cottonwood Heights Police Department and Chief Russo. We have a wonderful mayor and many strong, honest, caring council members. Please solve this without causing more undue stress and problems for our great police department and Chief Russo. Next one is Paul Ellings, Ellingson. I would like to, I would like to express my support of the Cottonwood Heights Police. I recognize that no police department is perfect. I also recognize that they're, they're serving imperfect people. I am grateful that when a stone twenty-year-old shows up on my back porch demanding to be let in at three AM that the Cottonwood Heights Police show up in force in a couple of minutes to deal with the situation. I'm grateful for their service showing up at four AM to a fire in the apartments next to our home, helping rescue and keep our neighbors warm. I'm grateful for their looking out for drunk drivers in the neighborhoods because drunk drivers have caused great damage to my wife's family. Imagine if we were to treat other professions like some are treating our officers. What if we applied these same standards we have seen in the past three weeks to teachers? How horrible would that be? Just imagine the hurt it would cause a teacher and their family if a vocal minority showed up at their school on a regular basis and called our teachers disgraceful names through bricks, bricks at them and spit on them through every nasty bodily excration on them, told them we wanted to fund them, said that the only good teacher is a dead teacher burnt their classroom. And when we demand that no punishment come on the criminal for their crimes because we were frustrated with the a few bad teachers. Yes, there are a few bad teachers mixed in all the thousands of amazing teachers. Now imagine if a protest were organized by the school principal. Can you imagine? Of course, we would never do that. That would be absolutely shameful, but some are doing that, that exact thing to our officers, to the men and women that are protecting our freedoms. Those that are calling to defund or redistribute funding to other services disgrace some dear friends of mine who live in Cottonwood Heights. Ten years ago, they lost their son and father who was serving as a police officer in the Salt Lake Valley. My twenty-three-year-old friend was left parentless at the age of thirteen because his father gave his life for people like serving us, putting us with the most rehemp, reprehensible people every single day. These friends suffer every single day because their son and dad gave his life for us and for the people that hated him. Shame on those that are disgracing a lost son and father who is doing his best to protect our freedoms. Shame on them. I feel so disappointed that some of our leaders and teachers in this amazing community are leading this crusade against these men and women that are protesting their freedom, protecting their freedoms. I hope that the citizens of Cottonwood Heights don't have to pay the short-term and long-term costs of these antagonists. Please protect our police force, please honor the sacrifice they are making. Our neighbor that lost his life nearly ten years ago once told me how difficult his job was. He lamented that not one call on the radio was to invite them over for a barbecue or to wish them happy birthday. Said it was always to deal with some nasty situation. Might I propose at least one, once a year, we hold a significant celebration for these men and women when we come together as a community and pay honor to them for their families and the sacrifice they make for us. Families of these officers need to know that we support them and the sacrifice they are giving to us. Perhaps one of the evenings of Butler Real Days could be exclusively devoted to those men and women and their families. After all, some of them will give their lives for us and their children will lose a father or mother and parents will lose a son or daughter and a wife or husband will lose their spouse. I suggest we honor them instead of disrespecting them. Next one is from Philip Reichert. I am writing as a concerned citizen and grateful patron of the Cottonwood Heights Police Department. I believe that such an absurd proposal to defund our city's police department by allocating its resources elsewhere and thus eliminate our police department is treasonous, seditious, unpatriotic, and unconstitutional and outright disgraceful. The city city councilperson, Tally Bruce, is an alarming figure who does not deserve to serve our city whose views align itself with radical Marxist communist groups seen in Seattle Capitol Hill Autonomous Zone, AKA Capitol Hill organized protest whose goal is to overthrow our American government and place it with communism through the means of violent revolutionary takeover. How dare this councilperson take away from the constituents our rights of the people to be supported in our defense and civil society of some unrighteous usurpation of our sovereignty, liberty, and American constitutional government, government where their represented and the rights of all are protected. The protection of the people is a solemn duty of the Cottonwood Heights Police Department. To deny our protection is to deny our liberty and turn our freedom over to depauls and anarchists and strongly urge the city to hear the voice of the people and do the duly duty entrusted to it by maintaining a well-funded police department. I also support Chief Russo and the officers, both men, women, and men who are heroes of the city. Next one is from Rachel Davis. I have been a resident of Cottonwood Heights for the past thirteen years. It's a place where I've felt safe and protected. Much of this feeling is due to a wonderful service of our police department. Five years ago, my husband and I purchased this a house that backed Anzac Park. We were happy to stay in Cottonwood Heights because we love this area. In the summer months, we have needed to call on the police regularly because of allowed and sometimes unlawful activity in the park. All of the officers that are, have responded to our calls have been patient, kind, and respectful to not only my husband and I, but the people in the park that were participating in these sometimes illegal acts. They also responded quickly once our call was placed to the non-emergency number. In my opinion, the men and women that serve in the Cottonwood Heights Police Department are a huge asset to our city. They provide safety and security in a world of turmoil. I disagree with police brutality. I also disagree with defunding police departments, especially departments that have done such a marvelous job at upholding the law in their cities and areas. I believe the CHPD has done just this. Please do not put our city at risk of crime and other problems by dismantling or defunding our police department. The next one's from Ron Schrader. I have been made aware that one of our city council members is organizing a protest and a movement to defund and eventually eliminate our Cottonwood Heights Police Department. I'm appalled that a representative of our city government would stoop so low. I support Chief Russo and all the members of our police department a hundred percent. We all these brave and honorable people a great debt for their willingness to serve and to protect the citizens of our community at great personal risk. To do something as foolish, reckless, and disgraceful as defunding or eliminating our police force is a big step toward destroying our city or state in our country. Next one's from Roxanne Forbush. I've lived in Cottonwood Heights for thirty years. I've worked with our police department for emergency preparedness. They work so hard all the time. They care about everyone. We are so thankful for our police force. I'm so wondering why a member of the city council would want to defund or whatever they want to do against our police department. We love and support the police department. Maybe this councilperson should work in the police department's shoes for a while and make jud, make judgments in seconds. Next one from Sally Brown. I'd like to lend my support for the CHPD as a lifelong resident of this community. I'm grateful for the visible presence of our officers, for their quick response and for their professionalism. I feel safe in our community, being in, being a law enforcement officer is a high-stress and sometimes dangerous job that is underappreciated and underpaid. Although improvements can always be made as we learn from experience, overall, the CHPD is doing a good job and should be recognized for their efforts. Thank you for your professionalism and dedication to making our community safe and comfortable. Next one is from Tom and Stephanie Johnson. A grateful thank you for the Cottonwood Heights Police Department because of their efforts. We feel safe and secure in our community. Our intentions with them over many years have been positive. Our interactions, excuse me, with them over many years have been positive. We appreciate concerns about bad and prejudicial policing. All law-abiding people of all races should feel supported, respected, and protected by the police. We urge full funding of the Cottonwood Heights Police Department and continued funding of training and education for best practices in policing for our officers. The next one's from Thomas Forbush. It's come to my attention that a member of our own city council is organizing a protest against our Cottonwood Heights Police Department. I've lived in Cottonwood Heights for forty-five years and love the city dearly. It's unbelievable and incomprehensible that we have members of our own city council that want to ultimately defund and eliminate our police department. We fought too hard to get our own police force the answers to you, to the mayor, and to us as citizens in our own city. This is the dumbest and most idiotic proposal I've ever heard. I stand against it a hundred percent. The next one is from Tom Riplinger. I was grateful to be involved in showing support to our police yesterday. However, I'm saddened for the reason it came about through the misguided decisions of councilmember Tally Bruce. After I saw what BLM coupled with Antifa did to our state capital, I was shocked to hear that a council member from Cottonwood Heights would align herself with them. As a citizen, I could not imagine she would chance bringing that to our neighborhood just to make a point. I've always expected that our local elected officials should be common sense, rational-thinking people, but she did not demonstrate that yesterday. I, I'm sure that she has some legit concerns, but her methods have alienated and damaged her ability to encourage people to listen. If I could offer some counsel to Tally, boy, I mean, no, you do not strike me as someone who tries to understand before you act. I made those mistakes myself. I found that when I take the time to watch, observe, listen, ask honest questions and ponder it all, it has helped me understand why things happen the way they do. It changes my perspective, opens my heart, and increases my appreciation and respect towards people who do things differently than I would. Once that is achieved, I am better positioned to offer the right suggestions to an audience that will listen. Instead of forcing people, we move as a group, we move rationally towards a better position that we can all be happy with and united. It's a win-win situation. With all that, with all that being said, I do offer sincere thank you to Tally. Yesterday's events gave me and the community an opportunity to reflect on the positive influence of our community and the efforts of law enforcement to keep us safe. To reflect that we live in a relatively safe environment, to reflect that many of us are unaware of the sacrifice law enforcement does for each, does for us each day. To reflect on the kind acts of service that they do to the community, whether it's helping someone across the street fixing a flat tire, closing your garage door, keeping our streets safe, or helping resolve a domestic crisis. To reflect that their children and spouse have to worry on a daily basis whether the husband, father will come home alive at the end of the shift to know, to not know the vile and terrible things that, that people say to them because they are frustrated. And last, I quote from Benjamin Franklin. Freedom isn't the ability to do what you want. It's a responsibility to do what you ought. Anarchy is not the answer. Maximum freedom requires maximum responsibility. What makes our community great and helps our law enforcement is the individual efforts of each citizen to be personally responsible for their lives and the kindness we show towards each other. Next one is from Val Butcher. My name is Val Butcher. My wife, Jan, and I have lived in Cottonwood Heights for forty years. We've raised five children here, all graduated from VHS. We have had several occasions over our time here when we have needed the police for various reasons. We've always received prompt courteous service from our officers and we consider it an absolute travesty that any possible discussion should take place to reduce our force or their pay. In fact, their pay should be increased. My father was a police officer for forty-two years. He was shot and stabbed. Many nights I sat with my mother, wondering if he would make it home that night. Yet each day he proudly wore his uniform, straightened his badge, and headed off proudly to serve and protect. It's appalling to me to think that a councilwoman supposedly representing Cottonwood Heights could possibly imagine that our citizens would want less police protection and disrespect them, and she has. Thank you to all those officers looking out for our little city between the canyons. Next one is Thomas Sprunt. Has this country, has this country gone mad? Did the nation lose their cool and disband our police departments after the Rodney King incident? These events leading to the death of George Floyd are inexcusable and tragic. Do we have officers in our country that are untrained and lacking in judgment? This is very possible. What we have here is a training issue. Cosmetologists and at the high school level get more training than our police officers at the academy, if there is one. If you disband our police department, you're asking for chaos and anarchy. Leaving the nation with only one alternative martial law, this is not the answer and it's not freedom. Protest and freedom of speech are a right we have all, all have as Americans and we should do it peacefully. Riots and unlawful looting is not acceptable and we do not have a police. And if we do not have a police department who is going to put an end to it, who protects the innocent bystanders? No one will. I support our Cottonwood Heights Police Department. I do not believe they are corrupt and I rely upon them for protection, justice, and order. Stop the madness and let's get back to living our lives. The last public comment to Cottonwood Heights Mayor Peterson, City Council, and City Staff. On behalf of the Cottonwood Heights Parks, Trails, and Open Space Committee and the PTA's Dog Park Subcommittee, we'd like to express our gratitude to the mayor, city council, and city staff in responding to residents' clear interest in establishing an off-leash dog park with Cottonwood Heights, within Cottonwood Heights. As you are aware, results of the Cottonwood Heights two thousand and nineteen official citizen survey revealed that fifty-four percent of the citizens surveyed were in favor of dedicating a portion of a park for off-leash dogs. Sixty-nine percent of dog owners who make up half of the city's population were in favor as well. An off-leash dog park was the survey's most desired improvement in the park section of the survey and the Bark in the Park event was the second most attended city event in two thousand and nineteen. We support the budget amendment to allocate funds for an off-leash area at the Ferguson Canyon Overflow Lot and look forward to helping the city complete this, the, the four action items noted within the budget outline in regard to this long request for amenity. In particular, continuing to engage the PTA's for design feedback and participating in a public open house or other public feedback events, efforts, kind regards. Roger Care and Melissa Fields, PTO S Chair. Mayor, as, those are the comments that I have. I want to reiterate that if there are some that feel that they didn't get the information read, they can make me aware of that. And I will make sure it's on for the next meeting. Also, any of those emails that came in after five o'clock as designated in our process on our council agenda, we will forward that information to the council as well.
All right, thank you, Tim, very much. That's just about an hour and a half of comments. And as one, I appreciate the citizens of our city and others who've taken the time to share their thoughts. I have a couple of comments, but before I make a couple of comments, I'm, I'll give the opportunity to any of our council members if they'd like to take a couple of minutes and comment based upon our public comment period. I think that'd be appropriate based upon uniqueness of tonight's level and magnitude of comments that have come forth. Anyone have any thoughts, comments?
I'll jump in, Mayor. I, um, I found a common thread in the second half of those emails about maybe a false narrative that those people had been fed regarding unfunding our police or defunding our police. I don't know who spread such a rumor, but it seemed to be a consistent thread through everyone's comments. And to the best of my knowledge, that conversation has never been brought up by myself or anyone that I know. It's so easy to manipulate with fear. We're seeing that. We're seeing it sweep across our nation right now. And it's easy to get people worked up and in a frenzy. Nothing's more terrifying than personal injury or assault. And to play on their emotions and manipulate them with fear is truly heartbreaking. Right now, more than ever, our nation needs to heal. We, I've never known such a division in my lifetime. And it breaks my heart that people would utilize fear as a tactic for political or other gain.
All right, thank you. Doug or Scott in comments?
I'd like to comment if I would, Mayor.
You bet.
Tally mentioned about intimidation and fear and different things like that. I don't know if those people that were there last night saw the difference in the attitude and the tenor of those people that were there to support our police force versus those that were screaming and had vulgar signs and were very, very out of line. We don't need that in our city, Tally. And I, as one, am very offended that you brought that into our city. Many of these people were not from our city. Some were. Many were brought in from other protests that you have been and supported. And no one condones what happened in another state and in anywhere in our state, in our United States. But to bring that into our city. But to bring that into our city, yes, I'm offended. And I'm very sad that it had to come to our city. This is not a place to bring that kind of attitude in our city because it was very disruptive. And if you listen to those people, in fact, check it, it was all emotion and very little substance.
It's interesting. It's interesting.
Tally, let him finish. Don't interrupt.
Sorry, Doug. What did you have more to say?
Yeah, I just, I just feel like it's easy to twist, as you have a tendency to do, to say that you, you love our police force. And but yet you attack them. There's a lot of record in many meetings, many, many instances where you attack our police force. And then you come in and you say, okay, we're being not being transparent in our budgeting. And then you say, what a wonderful job that our administrators are doing to try to make sure that we make the most out of every dollar that taxpayers play, pay. And then you come out and you and you say, oh, they're wonderful. But then you say they're being not being transparent and you're going to put your foot down. And I don't really, I think that's fine if you want to kneel during the pledge. That was never an issue. I heard you on channel 13 saying the reason the pro police rally was held we because you knelt down during the pledge. That was not. Well, that's, that's what's on channel 13 is recorded. But I just think that's very disingenuous to to try to change it and flip it and do one thing and then act another way. But that's, that's all I have to say about that.
All right, let's let Scott.
I would like to address his comments. So they were mostly directed at me.
Well, no, I'll let you let, but Tally, you've commented. Let, let Scott comment first and then let's come back to you and try and be fair with everyone. But yeah, I don't mean to cut you off, but let's ask Scott, then you can definitely comment again, Tally. Scott?
In respect to the activities of last night, I am glad I that both sides came and and stayed. They expressed their opinions and there were no significant instances other than some yelling and a little bit of disagreement that way, but I guess that is to be expected. I I I my, the biggest issue that I have here is the implication that there was fear and manipulation and that's heartbreaking. To me that, I'm sorry, it screams hypocrisy, but that's just my opinion. Thank.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Tally, before I turn to you, just to be in order here, I'd like to make just a couple of comments myself and allow you to respond since you like to do that. First of all, I appreciate the willingness for the decorum and the civility in our discussion. I attended the rallies downtown Salt Lake and I saw both sides. I saw people get in the face of other people who were trying to hijack the rallies and tell them that's not the message, but also I saw some very disturbing things, but I was glad I was there to witness it. I was proud that last night was basically peaceful. Like Doug said, there was a few signs and the things that were offensive. But I understand, respect the rights of people to do that. With that being said, I clearly, hopefully the message from from our, our city councils that all lives matter. That I believe personally that we have an outstanding police department. We have outstanding officers. But like I've learned, because I'm old, that any outstanding organization is always always striving to improve. Much of the request of those who were asking for reform last night, they're asking for things like opposing chokeholds or increasing sensitivity training or limiting excessive force. Many of those things are already in place. But I realize that we can revisit those things. We can be better educated and we can tweak those things. I don't think any organization, any police department shouldn't be striving to make improvements. And I think the message is, is laid out there by almost all the comments on both sides, a respect to look at how we are operating and you're always progressing and changing. And I think we have plans in July to begin educating ourselves and giving feedback. With that being said, and I turn back to Tally for a minute to her request, Tally.
Um Councilmember Peterson is fairly new to the council position and I, I would like to strongly encourage him to learn the fine nuances of holding budget items highly accountable while at the same time supporting the staff or the police officers that those budgets address. If you equalize unlimited funding equals support of the police, you are not being accountable to your constituency. And their taxes will continue to climb year over year over year. It is your job to represent those constituents and their tax dollars and their concerns about where that money is spent. So if you blindly believe that police support equals funding and increases year over year over years, that's a dangerous, dangerous stance. When you complain about bringing that element into our neighborhood, I would just say, when you're accustomed to extraordinary privilege, equality can feel like suppression. That element lives here in this neighborhood. They are my friends. They are my family. And for you to put yourself on a pedestal and not want to hear what they had to say, the speakers that were at that rally were fantastic. I wish everyone would have stayed and heard the messages that they shared. They were heartfelt. They were spot on. They were historical in context. They were educational. They were inspiring. And I truly wish every one of those early protesters, counter protesters had stayed to learn. We learned when we listened to each other. And I hear their fear and I hear their white supremacy and I get it. They want things just the way they've always been and they're perceived tidy suburbia. But it's time to listen to both sides and to feel and hear the pain of those that are being suppressed, targeted, discriminated against, bullied, harassed. And yes, it happens in our city. I find it interesting that you were quick to pick up on signs or posters that were offensive to you, but you ignored the fact that our police were politicized. We had signs plastered all over our city hall that our taxpayers pay for that building and they were politicized using the building to advertise for our police force. That is unacceptable. Neutrality. Police are not supposed to pick sides in political debates. They're supposed to protect and serve every citizen in this community. I find it highly offensive that they were politicized in that way. And I would also note that there were vehicles, trucks flying by with Trump flags zooming through that intersection at unreasonable speeds. Was there any accountability? And our police going up and down the street with their lights on and their sirens going. This is outrageous behavior. I'm shocked, appalled and offended and I can't believe that I'm alone in this voice and this understanding. It breaks my heart that we don't stand up and be a community for everyone.
Okay, thank you, Tally. Doug, Scott? Well, let me just emphasize again. I think that we're unfairly criticizing our police department. I think we have outstanding officers and to put them all in the same bucket and to overly criticize, I personally, for one, feel that's, it's unfair. Can we improve as a city council? Can we approve in our budget process? Can we prove anyway? Absolutely. But to, to put everything, everyone in the same position, it goes back to the, the idea of, of I don't know what the term is where we, we think everybody's the same, you know? It's not the case. You know, we have some great officers. I've been on ride alongs. I've, I've I've worked in criminal justice for years and so hopefully we can move forward and find a way to mitigate those few minor adjustments we need to make, but.
Mayor, I would echo that. We have fantastic officers. And I found it offensive that one of the letters was saying, every officer hates me. I know that to not be the case. I know that we have fantastic officers that are dedicated to protecting and serving that they didn't sign up to bully, harass or intimidate anyone. I know that about our officers. And to equate their budget responsibility with love of the officers, it's a nuance that people really need to learn to wrap their minds around.
Well, I, I, I'm concerned that they don't feel we support them based upon my communication with them last couple of weeks. I, that's, that's my concern.
There, there's a national tension right now. It's not just Cottonwood Heights. All police officers are feeling an unprecedented scrutiny of their occupation. And my heart goes out to them. Trust me, people scream and rant about politicians and.
Oh, I hope we can just send a better message to them that we're willing to listen to all sides. I guess that's the first way you solve a problem is first to listen. That's why I went downtown Salt Lake. That's why I was here last night. And listen to our officers and then that's how you can begin the dialogue civilly to look at specifics.
Thank you for staying the full night and listening and hearing everyone through. It was noticed and appreciated.
Yeah, I was glad that I stayed the whole night. One last thing of concern before I moved on. Tally, with all due respect, this is the second week in a row that you have called out Doug for being new or green or inexperienced. I don't feel that if that is the measure of being a good council person, that's a very dangerous tack for you to take considering who sits on the council with more seniority. It's, I don't think it's right. I don't think it's appropriate. And I don't think that you were treated that way. There, everybody has a chance to make a faux pas. I don't know that Doug has, but I'm just saying that type of comment I don't think has a place.
I think it's perfectly acceptable for a council person to have a learning curve. I don't think there's any shame in that and I don't think I refer to it in a derogatory way.
That's twice you've just told them that you're too young and maybe you need to learn, I guess.
It's just things that he wouldn't know quite yet.
All right. All right. Thank, thank you, everyone. The point is that each member of the council is elected by their constituents. Okay, that's the point. And we respect them as elected officials selected by the majority of those people living in that district. And that's all that I need to know personally. And appreciate your time and energy to become educated and to participate. Now, we need more people to run for office. We need more people to make sure we get out and vote. Okay, that's, that's a critical part of the American way to make change. But I, I, I think that, you know, how long you serve or things of that are not appropriate. In fact, you are elected by your constituents and representing that district. So thank you for that service. Let's, let's move on. We'll be, have more opportunities in the future to debate some of these things. The next item on the agenda, 3.0 is public comment regarding our trees and park strip landscaping ordinance. Mr. Johnson, do you want to introduce that very briefly?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I will be very quick here. I'm just going to show just a couple of slides from this. You've, you've seen this presentation numerous times, so I won't spend a lot more time on it. For the benefit of the public, this, the draft ordinance and a lot of these slides that I'm showing you are also posted on the city website. They have been there. The tree ordinance was initiated several months ago as a council priority to better manage and regulate trees and in public rights of way, as well as some hazard trees and tree preservation in certain instances, but also to look at the landscaping of the park strip in the rights of way as well. So we have drafted an ordinance and gone through extensive public process on this ordinance to get it to where it is today. The, just very quickly, the purpose of this ordinance is to reiterate the city's goal, goals and priorities regarding trees in public areas. To define the city's and the public's responsibilities, provide procedures for abatement of private tree hazards. Establish provisions for the protection of public trees and existing onsite trees when a development is proposed and then define standards for, for park strip trees and park strip landscaping. So how much landscaping can be hardscape versus landscaping and pervious surface versus impervious, what types of trees are okay, which types are not, and how we review those. Since the last council meeting, which was approximately a month ago, this has gone through additional review from the Architecture Review Commission and the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. So at this point in time, the Planning Commission, the Architecture Review Commission and the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee have all reviewed this ordinance. They have all unanimously recommended approval of this ordinance to the city council. Below is just a reiterated summary of the changes that have been made based on ARC and PTO S feedback. I won't read those again. Those were presented in the work session. So unless you have any other questions, it is in front of you for, for public comments tonight. I, I don't know that there are any. But like I said, action will be scheduled at a, at a follow-up meeting, probably at our next meeting. But in the meantime, the public is welcome to review the draft ordinance as it is online on the community development webpage and, and submit any additional comments as desired.
Mike, just so that I'm, this is specifically for trees in the right of way. It probably does not extend on to lots or backyards, anything like that. Is that correct?
That's generally correct. There are a few instances where it does extend on a private property. One would be in dealing with, with hazard trees or trees that, you know, due to their deteriorating conditions are are a nuisance. And it just provides some clarity for city code enforcement to help enforce those nuisance situations where a tree is, is dead and in hazard of falling or something like that. And it also establishes provisions for tree preservation. So if a property is going to be redeveloped, generally not a residential property, but a commercial type property and there are mature trees on the property. It gives us a chance to look at whether any of those mature trees are healthy and can be preserved before approving a development.
Well, I won't take the time now, but I had a, had an issue with dealing with that specifically come up on nuisance trees and preservation. So maybe what I'll do is I'll catch you sometime later this, this week or something. And you can bring me up to speed on exactly what the ordinance says about it.
Sure.
All right. Any further questions of Mr. Johnson? Tim, any public comment on this issue?
No, there's not.
So personally, I want to applaud Mr. Johnson and his staff for the excellent work in working with ARC and the PTA's committee and creating a trees and park strip landscape ordinance. I think it'll go a long way to enhance greenery through our city and it's great direction and very timely. So thank you. With that, we will move and move from public comment regarding that landscaping ordinance. And now open a public hearing regarding the proposed budget amendment for 2019, 2020 fiscal year. Scott, you're just, do you want to introduce that, please, quickly?
Yes. So I'm sharing on the screen now the budget adjustment memo. We went over this in the work meeting. Basically, there are eight adjustments proposed for the general fund totaling $38,000 in new expense and $33,000 in new revenue. A net of 5,000 of increased city funding. Seven of those are alternate revenue neutral where the expense and the revenue offset each other. Some of them for reimbursement for a windshield replacement that didn't take. Others for MOUs or donations or services that were provided or grants that we received for various things that, that all those happen to be related to the police department. And then number eight is a bus service contribution to the Central Wasatch Commission to enhance the ski bus operation during the winter time for a period of time to try and reduce traffic in the canyons and area. And then the final item is a carryover from funds from Salt Lake County towards the Canyon Center parking structure. This was funds that were originally budgeted in our prior budget year, but were not received then and were received during the current budget year. And so we're just. And so we're just reconciling the budgetary match for that. Those are the items and, yeah.
Yeah, just for clarification, that 750,000, that doesn't come into our general fund. That goes to the CDRA fund.
True, yes.
Okay, any last comments, questions? With that, this is a public hearing. Any, any public comment in this public hearing that's come to you, Tim?
I, I've not received any. I need to defer to Paula also, just to make sure that she hasn't received any. Paula, have you received any public comment?
No, sir.
All right. Hearing done, we will close the public hearing on the proposed budget amendment for 2019, 2020. And we'll move to our action items for tonight. We have a few. The first item is consideration of ordinance 341, approving amendment to the 2019, 2020 budget, which we've just discussed. Any questions on that ordinance?
No, I don't move that we approve ordinance 341.
It's been moved by Councilman Bracken. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any further discussion? Hearing done, I would call for the vote. Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
And I will vote, I will vote yes, and Councilmember Michael's excuse. The next item is consideration of ordinance 342, adopting a final budget for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. So Scott, you want to introduce that quickly?
Yes, I'll do that. So the, this budget is exactly the same as the budget that was presented for our tentative budget. And then we reviewed it even up to on June 2nd. The two items that have changed from that are outlined right here. An increase of 13,337 in property taxes. That was additional new growth that brings the total new growth to $63,000 in property tax. And the other item is a decrease in the UFA contract of 19,000 from what was originally anticipated and included in the tentative budget. So the combined of those two is an, is a reduction of $32,479 in our general fund. And just for information, because this is part of it, our certified tax rate is .001898. And that will need to be adopted as well as part of the budget so that we can input that into the state tax commission website.
Okay, thank you. Tim, would you take a minute for the, the record and the audience? And maybe talk about the process and the time it took to prepare the budget?
Yes, as we, as we talked about in the work session, we, we begin this budget right after the first of the year. We actually do some preliminary projections throughout the whole year. But we start our process working with department directors, getting details of what the needs are within the department, what the needs are for infrastructure and a variety of different other things. And we had a council retreat in January. We were able to get the council's input and direction and priorities and expectations related to this process. And then we continue to shape and formulate the budget, working with our department heads and also committees. Committees consist of our, our compensation committee, which has two council members on it, and also our budget committee, which has two council members. And we move through the processes of getting input through, through those committees in formulating this budget. In addition to that, we had the challenges with COVID, which we had to go back and do a reevaluation of our revenues and expenses and look at reducing those expenses and also adjusting the revenues. And we continued on with our compensation and budget committees. We also prepared a budget comparison document to be transparent, comparing to other communities, what our services are per population. That was a huge part of the process that the council requested that we do last year, as well as in our budget retreat. Scott spent extensive amount of time on that. Then we met multiple times in work sessions with the council and honed and shaped the budget from that point. My point with all of this is, as we adopted the tentative budget and allowed for open public comment for a number of weeks, which is required by state law, it's been a very open process, very transparent process, one that I've taken a lot of pride in and working with department heads and then with Scott. And I appreciate the efforts of them and also all the input of the council and the time that we're able to get input as well from residents. So all of that brings us forward to this day for adoption of the budget. And I think it's been a very transparent, good process with a lot of input, which is appreciated.
Thank you. I just want to emphasize in this budget that it does not include calls or merit for employees, but we kept them hold. It, it has a current hiring freeze. And it shows a reduction in sales tax revenue, about $600,000. And hopefully it turns around quicker than that. We got challenging times going ahead. So with that, I again applaud Scott and Tim for leading the process over the last about six months. I, I think it's been thorough. I'm, I'm impressed with it and thank you for your efforts for me. All right, any comments or discussion before we call for a vote?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple of comments if you'd give me just a minute or so.
You bet.
As I mentioned in our last meeting, our annual budget process produces budgets that are award-winning and recognized as being informative, transparent, and of use to our citizens by the experts in the field, the Government Finance Officers Association. Furthermore, our city's finances are audited each year, again, by licensed and certified professionals in the field. Each time, they receive clean opinions. Therefore, any claims contrary to those findings or implications of somehow there is some higher level of extreme transparency or super honesty, I find to be specious and misguided. Adding expensive adjectives to buzzwords does not alter the fact that our budgets are excellent. While there may be legitimate differences of opinion on allocation of overhead, being on the opposite side of a consensus simply means that that opinion did not carry, carry the day. It should not and does not equate to being abused or harassed. The mayor has asked that we undertake this process respectfully, and I take that to mean that we take out hyperbole, cliches, media speak, and threadbare accusations. Adding superlatives to buzzwords does not make a fact a falsehood or a falsehood into fact, not for anyone. We ought to strive to honor the truth and the consensus, even if it does not align with our chosen personal paradigm. Comments on the police budget such as the mayor and the council would make this choice no matter the cost is not only patently false, at least for me, but have no place in civil discourse. It implies either ignorance or malicious intent on the part of other council members. Even if you believe it to be true, some tact and decorum ought to be in order. Scott Jurges compiled an excellent comparison of our neighbors, our neighboring city's budgets broken down by department. No small feat. And despite being praised for his skill set and ability, was also derided because last year's numbers were somehow more accurate, despite both he and Mr. Tingey clearly stating that the results of this year's analysis were much more thorough and useful than those put together last year. Praising the experts and then telling that they are wrong is incongruous and contradictory. Doug Peterson's comments were dismissed as, well, you were not here last year, and followed up by more misstatements of fact, specifically that the police costs were somehow closer to $8 million and that costs this year were dialed back through reallocation of expenses. Neither is remotely true. There was no dialing back or significant reallocation of overhead in this year's budget as compared to last year. Councilmember Michael and I did not request such an overhaul on our budget subcommittee. And even if we had, a decision such as that would need to come before the entire council as it would require a significant change in our process. Again, a process that produces a budget that is recognized as transparent, exceptional, and follows accepted accounting principles. Repeating a false statement does not make it fact, nor does adding an exaggerated adjective to a catchword. Just so our city's citizens know, Cottonwood Heights property tax for 2019 was .2002%. The Salt Lake Valley Law Enforcement Service area that funds UPD had a property tax rate of .2079%. So residents of Kearns, Magna, White City, Immigration Canyon, Copperton, and unincorporated Willow Creek and Granite pay 3.8% more in property tax just for their police service than Cottonwood Heights pays in property tax for all city services. Many of our city's services can be outsourced and most have been at one point or another. When we first incorporated outsourcing was the best method to keep providing the services to our citizens that they had come to expect. However, one of our first non-statutorily required hires was a code enforcement officer because our citizens wanted it. From time to time, the council has taken the time to study other services to see if there was a better way to provide them. When it handed a bill from the county telling us that our animal services was going to more than double with a reduction in service level, we took it in, we looked into it and found out that we could provide better service for less cost by doing it in-house. In our last meeting, we renewed a contract with the rec center to provide services in our parks, trails, and our open spaces. That contract has changed significantly over the years as we have taken some aspects of the services in-house to our public works department. This is a great example of the council's history of looking into services to determine the best way to provide them. Public works and police services have also been thoroughly vetted. Two of the many factors we make, used in making a decision to change are having transparency and direct control over those budgets. We have the right and the duty as the elected officials to review the budget in each city department. Asking questions is fine, but when in reality, those questions are just thinly veiled accusations and condemnations, a hostile and combative situation is often the result. The terms bullying, harassment, and abuse were used in relation to our budget process. Those terms are inflammatory. I did not see any evidence to support such accusations. Being disagreed with does not rise to the level of those chosen terms. They wreak more, they wreak more of a victim playing and attention seeking. Such methods are disingenuous and are typically used to elicit sympathy to alter opinions when the facts don't support a personal paradigm. Councilmember Michael and I disagreed on a number of budget topics, but did so without resorting to name-calling or incendiary remarks. I sat with Councilmember Bruce last year and the benefits and compensation, compensation committee last year. I attended our budget retreats both years. Each person has had adequate opportunity to have their say, offer up suggestions, and to be heard, implying anything less is deceptive. I will not be manipulated into a myopic and twisted view of our budget process or allow it to be hijacked or publicly denigrated to sucker support for a personal agenda. Our citizens deserve better. The majority of our citizens have clearly stated that they appreciate what we have done and the way we've done them. Our staff has worked tirelessly to produce another excellent budget for 2020, 2021 fiscal year. And I thank Mr. Tingey, Mr. Jurges, and the others for their efforts. If there are no other comments, I would move that we approve ordinance 342.
I have some comments, Mayor. I, I want to apologize. It sounds like I've, I've been completely misunderstood. I, and I, I take full accountability that I brought this to the table way too late in the budget discussion. I, what I actually was seeking was that we go department by department and allocate how much of HR is spent on city staff and how much of HR is spent on police. And then we go to IT and we do the same thing. How much of IT is actually spent on police, cars, computers, laptops, technology? We, we don't allocate in that way right now, and it's perfectly legal and it's perfectly acceptable by accounting standards. But if one really wants to compare the cost of what a holiday city, our neighbor, and closest in size proximity, if we truly want to compare, what are they spending all in for police resources versus what we are spending all in for police resources? As I sat with this and thought about it, as a business owner, having locations in different parts of the valley, I factor in even the square footage of my rent on the west side as opposed to the east side. That's a consideration we've never taken into account. Our, our police force occupies 16,000 square feet of prime real estate on the east side here. Average UPD district or what, what do they call it? Offices are about 4,000 square feet. So one-third of what our police, I'm, I'm glad they have a tremendous facility and it's beautiful and it's, and it's abundantly large. But let's be really super candid about the cost associated with that, the debt services that we pay on every square footage that they occupy. And I didn't bring this to the table soon enough for our budget committee to tackle it this year. I apologize. I definitely, definitely was late. I, I made that decision for personal reasons, trying to buy myself peace of mind, and it was out of integrity. And I apologize profusely. And if I've been misunderstood in what I'm seeking in the budget process, that, that's what I'm seeking is, is a business level accountability for every dollar. In my restaurants, I would never, I would never go and allocate HR. I, I break it down by restaurant and by employee. And it's a level of accounting that I am accustomed to. And that when I put my, my constituent hat on, my, my taxpayer hat on, it's the, the level of transparency that I want. And I totally respect that you, as a council, want a different form of accounting practice, and it's perfectly legal, and I get that and I respect it. But I'll continue to make the ask because it's what I want to see and what I feel the voters that I represent want to see in terms of transparency. And call it hyperbole if you want, Scott, but radical transparency. And I, that's what I feel it is, a business level transparency.
Thank you. Doug, did you have a comment? Doug, you're muted.
It's going back and forth. I think that we've gone over those transparency issues as far as line item by line item, but I think we could always go over it further and, and take a look at that. But Scott and Tim, do you have any other further things that you think that we could do to, to try to accommodate? You know, that none of us like to pay property tax. That is something that we're guardians of, is to make certain that we get the very most out of our tax dollars. But we also have priorities and different things that, that are important to us. But.
Go ahead, sorry. I got you all.
I, I just would like to get the take from Tim and Scott to see what, what the merit, the tally wants to take and look at that. Because all of us want to be as efficient, transparent, and as efficient as we can so that we can make every dollar count. Because it is very important. It's a big part of our lives of what we pay out for property tax. So I was going to see what, go ahead.
Before I do that, when, when I became mayor, I felt that we had a desire to have a process that was, was broader, more in-depth. a process that was broader, more in-depth. And so a couple of years ago, when we looked at how UFA was creating their budgets by having council members or commission members, et cetera, involved in committees. And then when Tim came on, we said that would work great, but we'd follow that preface it by having the council meet and set priorities. You know, I spent 20 years doing indirect cost accounting in Salt Lake County where we did track every indirect cost. We took a percentage of attorneys, of personnel, of insurance and everything, and allocated them to every activity. It's something that can be done, but if we all need to agree that's what we want to do and we need to sit down, when we sit down and set our priorities for the year and say, "That's the way we want it." Because one thing I learned in accounting is that you can do it four or five different ways and all can be accurate. Okay, it just depends on what level and how much effort you want to put in it. It's like adding the cost of the building, the debt service to a certain area. If you move that service out of that area, that debt service doesn't go away. You just have to push it somewhere else. There's a whole myriad of issues. But as a council with difference seeing of opinions, we set a process we all agreed to. And that process, I appreciate Tally, you know, saying that she should have spoke up sooner. But when we had our retreat that day and we set priorities, it should have been clear or we should have agreed that that's what we wanted to do. We kind of did a little bit of a hybrid, okay? And we had the committees and the council members had input each one of those committees. Like Scott said, he and Christine disagreed on some things but worked through it and came out with a recommendation. That's why you're a council of five people. You're not going to agree on everything 100% of the time. So moving forward, if we want to modify that further, when we have our retreat the first of the year, that can be an agenda item and Tim will keep items on his agenda and we can review it and set those priorities. But, you know, doing it tonight's not going to change anything other than you are providing clarification of how we got where we are. But going forward, just like we talked about police, we're always looking for ways to be better. And the way Tally's doing it, I've seen it done in government. It's a lot of work. Because of that type of indirect cost assignment to programs is why our Public Works Department's costs were going to double a couple of years ago, Scott remembers, because of the indirect cost that was being charged to it. There's a lot of implications, but those are things that I think we deal with when we have our retreat and set our priorities so that we can give direction to the administration to move forward. Doing it after the fact is difficult. Again, I appreciate thy recognizing that. With that being said, I hope that going forward, we'll continue to look for ways to make things better. Again, Scott, our finance director's done outstanding a job, being totally objective. The department heads have been involved. Tim, I appreciate his efforts. I met with him every week and he assured me and he went through every line item with every department. So, you know, that's there. How we make it more transparent, we'll keep improving. With that being said, Doug, if you want to ask Scott and Tim if they want to answer your question, that's fine.
I appreciate, Tally, you were very clear on what you were after. I appreciate that. Then you're right, that's certainly the way to do it. I would also, one of the other things that you've said many times is you want apples to apples. And that's why I appreciated the work that Scott did this year. I think he got as close to, I was surprised at how well he was able to do. But with that being said, Mayor, I did make a motion. Let's, if it's okay, let's move.
Okay, we got a motion by Scott Bracken to approve ordinance 342, adopting our final budget for the next fiscal year. Do I have a second?
Since no one's seconded, I will second it.
Then moved by Councilor Bracken is then seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any further final comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
I sincerely apologize that I'm voting no. It's purely out of my own personal integrity and I'm disappointed with myself that I didn't voice things sooner, so I apologize. No.
All right. Thank you, and I will vote yes. Moving on to the next item of action is consideration of Resolution 2020-27, approving entry into an interlocal agreement with Cotwood Heights Parks and Recreation Service Area for public property services that the maintenance of parks owned by the city, as I think Scott was mentioning earlier of collaboration partnerships we have. Any further comments on that? I don't think we need to go through it unless, Tim, you want to say something? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of Resolution 2020-27.
I move that we approve Resolution 2020-27.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bruce. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bracken got in just before you, Doug. So it's been moved by Councilmember Bruce, seconded by Councilmember Bracken. Any further comments, suggestions? We appreciate their partnership. They're great to work with. You know, I'll call for the vote. Councilor Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The next item is Resolution 2020-28, approving interlocal agreement for participation as coal permittees for what's it called? It's UPDES, which is dealing with transferring water through the system. Matt, you want to say anything about that quickly?
Just really quick. That's the UPDES, the Utah Pollution Discharge Elimination System. It is our, we are co, we are working together with other entities in the valley as part of the permit for stormwater discharge.
Mayor, we love clean water. I would move we approve 2020-28.
Okay. Love clean water going down out to the rivers. I absolutely agree. That's important. I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Bruce and seconded by Councilmember Bracken.
I'm going to drink to it.
Any further discussion? It's about 5,000 a year for a five-year agreement and allows us to have some input and have that dialogue. A call for the vote then. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilor Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Next item of business is approving reappointments to the Planning Commission of Mr. Jesse Allen and Mr. Dan Mills. Maybe want to comment? Tim, you want to comment on those or Mr. Johnson?
I'm just recommending approval of these reappointments. I think they're doing a good job.
Thanks for getting their bios out in a timely fashion. They sound like great people. Thank you.
Mr. Allen is a, I think he's a landscape architect if I remember, and Dan Mills is a local businessman.
Jesse is responsible for the plaza and the decoration and the design out there where we were last night, so.
That's right.
Thank you to him.
And I think he's from District Three if I remember correctly, yeah.
Yeah, he started out in a good spot and then just he absconded on me.
Moved over, yeah. All right.
Move that we approve Resolution 2020-
29. Oh, 30. No, 29.
This is 29 for the planning.
Yeah, thank you. 2020-29. Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilor Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. All right. The next item of business is Resolution 2020-30, approving reappointments to the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Committee, as the council is aware, and that may be due to Doug, is that this was a new committee that we created just about two years ago. So it's our, I think it's our first reappointments and it's Greg Hilbig and Bruce Jorgensen and Michael Menzen. So Mr. Johnson, any comments on these or Tim?
No.
I would just comment, Mayor, how profoundly grateful we are for all of these volunteers. These committees just make up such an essential part of our city.
No, I echo that and having a personal passion for Parks, Trails, and Open Space that having your input and based upon our surveys of the community interest, I think this committee has been very effective. But again, with all our volunteers, with our Arts Council, our Story Committee, and ARC, and all of them, I think it's it's citizen involvement which really makes the city run, so I appreciate that sentiment. I'd entertain a motion approving reappointment of these three individuals to the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Committee.
I move that we approve 2020-30.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bruce. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I call for the vote. Councilor Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, that's all of our action items, other than approval of the City Council Work Session minutes of June 2, 2020. Any questions on those minutes? If not, entertain a motion on those minutes.
I didn't get a chance to read them, Mayor. Can I abstain for that vote?
You're welcome to, yeah.
Thank you.
I did. There was a good portion of them during our discussion debate that was actually transcribed in the verbatim, which I appreciated because it was lively. There was much that was said. And I appreciate that going into the official record.
I appreciate Tim doing that, yeah.
With, I mean, without, I move that we approve the consent calendar.
It's been moved by, approved the consent calendar by Councilmember Bracken. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Thinking by Councilmember Peterson with Councilmember Bruce abstaining. A call for the vote. Councilor Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
That's a yes. Councilmember Bruce abstains, and Mayor Mike Peters will vote yes. That's all of our business. One quick question to Tim, as we adjourn for tonight or before we adjourn. Do we know going forward in July if we'll be continuing Zoom meetings, or do we have a timeframe of when we possibly will consider meeting in person again?
We're still going to evaluate that. Some of it depends upon the governor's, if he extends the timeline on how we're meeting right now. If not, there's still opportunity to meet remotely, but we'd have to do it in a different format. So we're just going to evaluate that. I'll probably be talking to all of you or sending out information to all the council requesting your input. I was at the Unified Fire Authority meeting this morning. They asked the same question of all of the board members there and had a very split input of what they felt like they wanted to do. Many did not want, did not feel comfortable meeting. And others did. So I would like your input prior to that time. We're also watching what the governor's going to do as far as extending his directive. It's more than a directive, but extending that, so we'll have to talk about it.
All right. With that being said, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we-
Go ahead.
I will second that, saying that once we do meet together, I won't get cookies delivered to my desk, but that will be fine.
Well, I'm here at City Council and I miss having a sandwich here for me. I'm hungry. But anyway, thank you, everyone, for your time and your effort. These are challenging times and hopefully going forward, we can continue to aggressively listen and apply those things that are in the best consideration for our constituents. So, good night, be safe. Thanks, Riley. Thanks, Robbie, for being here. Thanks, Paula, everyone else. We're adjourned.